All right, now, welcome everybody to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Regular Board Meeting of the Union County Board of Elections. I hereby call the meeting to order. First item of business is to stand forward your pledge of allegiance. And with powers of your religious will pledge.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
We all have an agenda here tonight. Um, does everybody have a chance to review the agenda? Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Write that as. We now have approval of the October seventh, twenty twenty five minutes, uh, which we have here today. Uh, I am making the suggestion, if I may, uh, to move, uh, the fact that Vice Chair Ms. Boshback, uh, arrived at five eleven just up to the top where it says Board Members present.
Okay. What?
You're listed down here under the new business. You'll see as arriving at five eleven. I just would rather have you up being present at the top of the.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, can I have a second to that?
Second. Well, seconded.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, or no opposed, so, uh, that's approved. Is there any other additions or deletions to the minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty five? All right, hearing none, we will move on. We have a spot now for public comments. Uh, is there any from the public that wish to make any comments here tonight? All right, hearing done, we'll move on. First item of new business is the inclement weather policy. Uh, that's part of our package here today. We all have that. Uh, there is a change as always. Is there any explanation asked for why we have this on the agenda?
Yeah, we just would like to update this in preparation for the upcoming early voting. Um, we occasionally have had inclement weather in order to close the early voting site. If that was to happen, the board would have to call an emergency meeting to make that decision. This kind of gives us the authority ahead of time, um, to know if the ca- if the weather's bad and the county closes offices early or either delays opening, that we can also, um, carry that over to our early voting sites as well as the, you know, the other offices in the county. Now, it does not apply to Election Day. On Election Day, you can only stop voting or close a site for a severe emergency or if the State Board of Elections was to, to stop voting because of weather. We can't, it doesn't apply to Election Day. This would carry for all elections, early voting periods during the term of this board.
So this will be for the general election?
Yes, as well.
Okay. Um, we have the recommendation, uh, of staff to adopt this resolution to adopt early voting inclement weather policy to follow, uh, the, for early voting, early voting only, not Election Day, to follow Union County government and their closing, uh, policy and/or, uh, periods. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Aye, immediately approve the resolution.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the passes. All right, the next, uh, item on the agenda is logic and accuracy testing.
Yes, um, shortly after the last meeting, uh, logic and accuracy testing for all of the equipment that's going to be used in this upcoming election was completed. Uh, that would be the election home place scans, the touch reader, which is the ADA machine. I believe that's the only part that was not completed before the last meeting, and the crank units, as well as the two high-speed tabulators and the central tabulator. They've all been, uh, tested for functionality and for accuracy, and they all checked out, and they've all been sealed. We have records of the serial numbers, serial numbers, and the dates that everything was, uh, tested and everything, all the procedures that were done, so, uh, we can enter this into the official, uh, minutes. Yep. And if anybody has any questions about that, I know we went over it at the, uh, past meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
This is the last check before they're used for this, this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And this happens before every election, every time they're used. So we'll start over again, uh, in the next election. We'll probably start testing them again in, uh, January or February of next year.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Whose, whose equipment are we using? Who's our manufacturer?
So we utilize Hart Intercivic voting equipment, and they are headquartered in Austin, Texas, and all their equipment is manufactured there. Uh, we started using them in twenty twenty. Is when we acquired that equipment, and we've had a really good track record with them since then.
Thank you.
Those, uh, numbers on the, the ratings, the nine point four, nine?
That's like the date. Uh, for some reason, it like wouldn't type out if Excel was being weird. So, yeah, it's the date, like nine, ten, nine, whatever the, it's the month and date.
Oh, okay, that's the deal with the testing.
Yes.
Okay.
The day, it's the day everything is performed, because, you know, if you look at the list, some of them were done on different days. It's just, uh, we do them in groups, so.
Pass it down to, uh, who's, uh, down, pass down the other side here. Everyone, if you will, ask, if you want to be, ask for a motion to move those testing, uh, results into the minutes, uh, of the meeting.
I would like to clarify, we do have, we do have more equipment than what is on that sheet. It's just that it's not being used in the selection, so all of it was not tested. But every, uh, we do have spares of each type that were tested in case something were to happen.
So obviously, in the general, the list would be much longer.
In a general, it's every single piece of equipment we have, yes. Yeah, it's.
Okay, so we're, that, we're, we're seeing nine point three all across. That's the day?
That's the date that it was tested on.
Okay.
And that, and all this was completed by a bipartisan team, uh, myself and Paula and, uh, maybe one or two other people were in on it as well, so.
Okay.
Multiple people involved in this process.
Well, I will ask for a motion to, uh, move the logic and accuracy testing results, uh, from the recent testing performed by staff into the official minutes of the board.
I'll move it. Yeah, that.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Uh, last, uh, item of the business is the Chief Judge, multi-party judge substitutions. Um, Ms. Pop, what's that? Oh, I skipped one? Yes, I skipped one. Multi-partisan assistance team appointments is the next item on the agenda.
Yes, so we had, um, six individuals come to class last week, uh, to take their course for the multi-partisan assistant team that goes out to assist them facilities to assist individuals that are unable to come in and vote either early voting or Election Day, and they don't have witnesses and things of that nature, or they can't fill out their forms. So if they're unable to fill the forms out, we'll assist them with filling out the form, requesting absentee by mail ballots. We'll help them bubble it in if they need assistance, or we'll serve as their witnesses at their facility. They went out, um, well, that's in someone else's report, so I'll let them tell you. So, um, I do have this here for their next two-year appointment. Uh, we have Shirley Damon, Carolyn Hansen, Ida Smith, Lorraine, Suzie Tane, she goes by Suzie, Cynthia Tycenter, which is Cindy, and Edna Wigfrohl Frutek. These individuals are bipartisan teams. It'll be a one Democrat, one Republican, Republican that goes out together. Uh, if there's a three-person team, it could be one other person of any party, and they would be note takers, but they would still be of this team, but, so these are Democrats and Republicans. Uh, we are eligible to use unaffiliateds in the event we can't find enough of one or the other party, but we have sufficient. We will ask for more people to sign up next year because we'll have a lot more, um, ask of these sites for us to come out. So before each election, they have a, uh, short class. This is their big class, and then they'll have a short reminder class before each election so that they're aware of what the rules are at the time. If MAPS training is updated by the state, we do another class before that, but they'll be getting appointed, or we're asking that the board appoints them for their two-year term, and then once y'all make a ruling, if you all agree, then these need to be signed up.
Um, so a- at each, uh, facility, there is one of each, at least one of each?
We always do everything bipartisan, one Democrat, one Republican. If we have extras, then they're extra, but at each table, it would be a Democrat and Republican with the voter, even to fill out their application.
How many of these teams do you have?
Um, I have six people here. Um, it just varies from year to year, so we have six people right now.
Okay. And their appointment is going to run through?
Two years, and then as soon as I find some more people after this election, but prior to the primary, I will ask for the board to appoint them through the end of this board's term. Or through October of twenty seven.
How, how do you, um, determine where they go? Do the facilities ask? I mean, do you also go to?
Call.
Assisted living facilities as well?
And they'll say, the assisted living facilities will call our office and say, we have an individual interested in voting. Can you have your team come out? And then we organize a first, um, meeting will be to set up for their applications, and it could be registrations as well, because people move in and out of the county. So they may be registering if they're here at these facilities and maybe they crossed in from MECC or somewhere else. So it could be a registration, an absentee request later at the ballot.
Question, what timeframe? When, when is this service available?
Uh, prior to the election, so we try to make sure we get out there before the end of registration because if they need to register and we go after that, that thirty day or twenty-five, depending on which election is, then we don't want to miss the cutoff of registration. So we start about forty-five days in advance, so a little longer. It'll vary from election to election.
Do those, uh, individuals have any, uh, I guess that, you know, talking about assisted living, and I'm not saying that this is an overall case for individuals that assisted living, but, uh, some who have been deemed to be?
They have to be able to communicate with us to be able to, um, make, um, tell us what they want. But if we go out there and it happens where when we, they come, we go out the first time, they may say, yes, I want the absentee ballot. I want to register, and they will talk to the people that day, but then when we come back, they don't, they change their mind, or they do not want to communicate with you at all, and in that case, their ballot is spoiled and setback spoiled.
Any further questions? And may I please have a motion to approve the six applicants, uh, to act as mighty, uh, multi-partisan assistant team appointments, uh, for the two-year period.
Runs to October the thirteenth of twenty twenty seven.
Running through October the thirteenth, twenty twenty seven. We have a motion to approve those applications.
I'll make the motion to approve those applications for those people to be a part of the MAPS team.
All right, we have a motion. May I give a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'll give you these. There's two for each person, um, so you'll just be signing right below the date, and we can collect them at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on the new business is Chief Judge and Party Judge Substitutions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a total of thirteen judges that need to be replaced out of the, um, individuals that were sworn in for this last two-year commitment. Um, we have five chief judges that need to be replaced and seven, um, excuse me, eight, uh, party judges. Five of the chief judges are all Republicans. Three have quit, um, for good. Two of them, um, need to be replaced for this election only. The three that quit, um, are Travis Udi of twenty-nine B. He said he couldn't commit to working the two-year term. Um, we also have Barbara Marsecca Parks. She has moved out of the county, so she's not, not able to work. We also have Frank Huber, who was at twenty-eight A. Um, it wasn't communicated to him that he was moving from Kensington to Sandy Ridge and, um, was not in approval of that, so he has quit as well. So those are the three chief judges that have quit. Two of them are out for this election. Um, one gentleman, Joe Brandonberg, said he has a three o'clock appointment on that day and wasn't aware that it was an all-day election. Um, we also have another chief judge that is out for medical, Meredith Ledbetter. So those are the chief judges. The party judges, we have four of them that are out for good, and four that are for this election only. We have, um, precinct number five, which is Diana Odom, who is out for medical. We have Nancy Pollock, who just didn't want to work this election, was at twenty B because she didn't feel it was a big enough election. We have Pamela McCullough, who is a Republican, um, party judge as well, who's out for this election because she had a conflict. We have precinct number forty-five, which is Newtown, which is Chris Clemente, who is a Republican party judge who felt he didn't have to come to training because there's online training available and would, um, not make it to training classes in person. So we also had a late cancellation this afternoon, there's Chris Cobb, who is a party judge at twenty-nine B. He is out, um, of town, so he is not able to work. And then we have twenty-nine C, which is Mindy Robertson, who flat out didn't return any of our phone calls. So she is out. Um, we have two Democratic judges. We have Melvin O'Reilly, who is out for medical purposes. And then we have, um, at thirty-eight A, Leslie Haslett, who just quit and no longer wants to work. So those are the thirteen, um, that need to be, we have replacements that need to be approved, approved for this election.
Do you have any, uh, replacements?
We have replacements, um, because we are finished with training now, so we have put those people through training. We have two that have not been, um, filled yet, which is twenty-eight A, which is Frank Huber, and Chris Cobb, which is twenty-nine B, that happened this afternoon. But we have found replacements for all of the precincts.
I would, uh, take a moment of privilege, and I would ask to nominate Frank Huber to twenty-eight D. Uh, I understand that you're saying he's out, um, but if you can nominate him to be at twenty-eight D, if you would take that assignment?
Okay.
And then that would leave, which one, twenty-eight A?
Um, twenty-eight A would, would need a replacement, yes.
All right. So who is at twenty-eight D currently?
Uh, Michael Buchanan.
Uh, I would, uh, see if Mr. Buchanan would move to twenty-eight A. And then, uh, the other ones, uh?
Um, twenty-nine B, which is Chris Cobb, which we could, um, find somebody in our alternates to take that spot, who's already gone through training.
Okay. And then the other, uh, chief judges, who, who also are, they need to fill or?
So we have Travis Udi, who, um, will be replaced with Cheryl Massey, who was previously a chief judge, who had went to training, so she would take that spot of twenty-nine B.
For this election only?
For this election only. So these are for these elections only, so what's going to happen is we're going to need new appointments for next election. So in the spring for twenty twenty-six, um, we're going to need new nominees for these spots, or how you want to fill in those gaps. Because the individuals that we put in for these roles now are just temporary, unless you want to commit them to asking for, you know, the two-year term.
And then, uh, Barbara Merska?
Yeah, uh, Barbara Mers- Merska Camper Parks. She moved out of the county.
And where was she at?
She was at twenty-eight D, and that's where Frank Huber will now go, and then Michael Buchanan will take where Frank was at Sandy Ridge, so.
Um, and, and we're going to be asking Mr. Huber, uh, if he would take that position, uh, for twenty-eight D, and then Mr. Buchanan, if he would move to twenty-eight A. Uh, with the impending election, is there enough time, uh, if we may, need to make an adjustment? Do we have enough time to do that?
For this election, yes.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. Does the board want to appoint Mr. Huber to the, as chief judge for that precinct?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, that, that's my motion.
Okay.
I've been watching him from out where they were back at that box recording. Little lad.
All right. So I'm, I, I'm going to make the motion to, uh, approve, uh, Frank Huber as chief judge for twenty-eight D, if you're so willing to do that. Michael Buchanan for twenty-eight A, and those other appointments as provided for by staff. Do I have a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Uh, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Thank you. All right. And I'll go into staff reports. Ms. Pop.
I wanted to update the board on the, um, observers for nonpartisan elections. At the last meeting, we had guidance from the state that there would not be any observers. The State Board met and, um, agreed on a different interpretation of that law. So now they are allowing, um, effective October eighth of this year, that there can be observers in, um, these nonpartisan elections. So where the party has a candidate on the ballot, the chair of the county political party can designate two site-specific observers per voting place and ten at-large observers that may serve at any voting site in the county. The chairs of a state political party may designate a hundred, um, state at-large observers that can serve at any site in the state. And unaffiliated candidates can designate two site-specific observers per voting site, wherever they are on the ballot. Um, no more than three observers from the same political party can be in the voting site at the same time. For this election, we have nineteen unaffiliated candidates. So for early voting, we can have, uh, we only have Republican and Democrat, so we can have three Republican observers, potentially three Democrat observers, and thirty-eight unaffiliated observers, for a total of potentially forty-four observers at our early voting site for this election. Election Day, um, the largest site is Kensington Elementary, could possibly, um, have twenty-four observers. And Sandy Ridge, twenty-three observers, and again, this is, um, the new interpretation that allows observers for nonpartisan elections. Um, since we have thirteen municipalities and, and there are a lot of municipal candidates that are unaffiliated, aren't, um, aren't connected with a party, it's, um, we, and we have so many towns, it may probably be affecting us more than some of, some of the other counties in the state. But, um, the observers have to be appointed, or the deadline to submit them to our office is noon on the business day before they serve. So if we were to get a large number, um, we would only have that half a day to make arrangements for that large capacity in a site. And the law has been changed recently, too. At one point, they had to sit in a designated area. Now they can walk around in the site. Um, they just can't be where, um, they can see a voter's ballot or any of the confidential information behind the, the laptops. So we'll see what happens.
Okay, last time we were here.
Yes.
It was in a non, we, we are nonpartisan municipal elections now, right? But?
I think they, the state interpreted it as the first time, and I'm, I'm, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but on the partisan, like next year, the party, which party you belong to is listed beside of your name. This, and it wasn't included for nonpartisan because your, your party's not listed on the ballot.
Okay.
But this, this new memo says what the, you know, who, whatever the candidate's associated with still applies.
That's what?
So, so we had to go through and check. We didn't even know what the candidates were, you know?
Whatever they registered as.
Yes, exactly, what they were registered as. So we went through the list, um, to get that information, and, yeah, it was, yes. It was interesting to see that there were that many unaffiliated candidates, so.
Wow, okay.
That'll give you enough time to make that determination as to your count?
Well, we can't, um, I mean, our, our precincts are set, um, so we can't change a precinct. Um, the guidance we were given is to try to work with the parties or the candidates if there's a large number, um, submitted to, 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 um, observe at a certain, at the same time period, so.
What, what happens, I mean, what has happened in the past as far as the amount of observers for nonpartisan elections?
Um, yes, we have not, not really had, um, many observers only, only from the parties in the past. Not, very few. And then for next year, you know, there's not really unaffiliated on the ballot unless they, um, complete that petition process to get on the ballot. It's usually just the parties.
I'm sorry, I don't want to sound dense, but I'm going to ask this. Are you saying that each candidate who's affiliated with a party can have up to three observers? No, that wasn't.
The party can, um, appoint three observ-, I mean, two per site, and then your at-large. But a candidate that's unaffiliated can, uh, appoint two people.
On their own? So where you have half a dozen unaffiliated candidates, you could potentially have twenty-four? Wow.
At a site where their name is on the ballot.
Wow.
That candidate can work with the party to theoretically live with them.
Not if they're unaffiliated, they don't have a party.
Yes.
But do the, do the observers have to designate as unaffiliated?
No, they just have to be registered in the, in the county.
So the, the unaffiliated candidate in the party can choose the same person?
They could.
To fulfill that role?
They could.
Well, okay, so I'm going to throw this out there, having been one of those people that worked in the polls and precincts and the judges and all that business. It's hard enough to do these things when you're getting paid for it, so I don't really think we've got a whole lot to worry about. I mean, okay, I've been a poll observer, it's in that list of... I don't think we're going to get overwhelmed with observers. That's my take. Yeah. But it's still alarming, the possibilities.
So I just wanted to give the board that update, and yes, and I mentioned the deadline to submit them is electronically or in writing by noon on the business day before each observer is scheduled to serve. And that goes for early voting. The list can be changed every day. So we, you know, like who we send out for early voting on Thursday, it could change again and have a new list for Friday. So it's kind of like a...
Does the board have to approve these? No?
No, we, yeah.
Okay.
The board does not have to approve these.
Any further questions on that from Ms. Hall?
So if someone, you know, is in the general pool of observers, can they all be sent on that list? You know, and not necessarily showing, it's not like a day-by-day. Right, say, well, we expect these people to come at some time during the election.
Site-specific? You mean like site-specific?
During early voting, say, early voting.
So...
Like if Jane is planning on observing, but maybe not the next day.
We don't keep the schedule, I mean, as far as the hours.
Yeah.
You can only, like, the party can only have three at a site at one time.
Yeah.
It's, they make you scheduled, the parties make you scheduled.
Right, I'm just...
Yeah, so we don't, we don't get to wander in and out.
Yeah, so say you've got two site-specific, and an at-large comes, and another at-large, you can't have four. You can only have three at a site.
Chief judge?
Chief judge. When the, when they observer...
They're going to check in.
Yeah, they check in, show their ID, get a name badge, and watch and listen, basically. They can ask the chief judge questions.
Any questions? And now, voter registration, Ms. Meadows.
Yes, I will be giving the voter registration report as of September 30th. Total registrations, 178,936. 158,044 are active, were active. 20,892 were inactive. Registrations approved during that period is 968. Total registrations removed, 439. 68 registrations removed were inactive. New registrations processed, 1,329 in September. 692 registrations. Changes of information, 680 registrations. Verifications processed for the month of September, 1,801. First verification returned, undeliverable, 56. 30 verifications were returned by the voter. Confirmations, 32 confirmations were returned by the voter. 45 confirmations were sent out. Three confirmations were returned, undeliverable, and nine were not returned at all. Next part of the report stands by party, stands by race, stands by ethnicity, and stands by gender. That's the NVRA report. Party changes for the month of September were 330 party changes. And I'm not going to read them all, but on the left were the original parties, and on the right, over, were the new parties, from what they were to what they changed to. Statistical reports, that's for your review or observation. We've gained 879 registrations since the last board meeting. In the NCOA mail-in, we received and processed 219 since July 1st. Any questions?
A lot of numbers.
Yes, a little white, a little white bit I'm reading.
Any questions for Ms. Meadows? Thank you, madam.
You're welcome.
All right, onto the final two reports. Ms. Rayes?
Good afternoon. The budgets we're showing are fairly balanced for the first quarter of the fiscal year. I'm happy to share that everything's well under budget in both budgets. We've only used 19% of the administration budget and 1.4% of the elections budget. Most of our line items are below 25%, which is great news for us. However, we did spend 94% of the travel budget. Our office staff and board members attended a conference over the summer, and that used up most of the budget then. I don't believe we'll go over budget in that line item, since the next conference, the next state mandated conference is online in January. Additionally, we have used 8% of line item 53, 54 to cover the cost of an annual software plan. But overall, I feel we are on track, and that we're managing our resources efficiently. Are there any questions on budget?
Was that the computer, the computer software, that you've got what you need at this point, though?
Yes, that was an annual plan. So what's left in there, it'll just be used for monthly expenses for the website.
Do you foresee anything going over budget at this point?
It's hard to tell right now. We'll have to see what happens next year during the primary. I think, I think usually we stay under budget. I don't think we've ever gone over budget since last year.
That am I almost. All right, any questions for Ms. Rayes? All right, hearing none, thank you, madam. Onto voter outreach. Ms. Jordan?
All right, so for the month of October, we have five events that are scheduled. One of our events, we went to the Pruitt Assistant Living Center, and we provided 13 IDs for residents. We also attended the Waxall National Night Out. And we will be attending the Trunks for Treats at the Sheriff's Department. So that's coming up on the 18th, and then that's on the one side of town. The other side of town is going to be Trunks for Treat in Marvin at Ephrath Park. And then we are also going to partake in the Career Fair on October 29th at the Ag Center, and another way looking for workers for election officials.
For this year and next year?
I'm going.
I'm going.
Lifetime commitment. We know why. If you've ever done it, you know why.
All right, any questions for Ms. Jordan on the voter outreach? Hearing none? Thank you, madam. We've now reached the point in the agenda for general discussion. For the good of the order, is there any general discussion by any of the members? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hall?
I would like the board to recognize Philip Pinson for his 15 years of service to the county. He was recognized by the county a few weeks ago in a ceremony, and here he is today.
I'd like the record to reflect the board's gratefulness to your service, and then these 12 years, and hope for another 12 years, at least.
Thank you. I'll do my best.
15, I'm sorry, 15 years. Hope for another 15. All right, anything else? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. It is currently 4:40. Our next meeting here is at 5 o'clock, so we've got about 20 minutes to take a break.